I am all set.
We've had it not as pleasant, but I frankly, I'd rather put up with this than...
I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, May 28th to order roll call, please, Pat.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Melczeski.
Here.
President Kardasky.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal is excused this evening.
Was Trustee Paul not sure if he was here, or what was that all about there? Oh, he's here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Number five, action on minutes from April 23rd, 2019, the regular meeting, April 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on something not on the agenda? One more time, anybody like to speak on something not on the agenda? Moving on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements, I have none.
None received for the Office of Clerk, Treasurer.
Okay, number eight, action on consent agenda, action on operator licenses, action on operator license renewals, investment report, April year-to-date, general fund financial report, April 2019, year-to-date, budgeted expenditures, and F is department reports. Does anybody want anything pulled, or motion approved?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to present the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Nine, public hearings, nine A, public hearing regarding ordinance number O5-2-19, amending a planned unit development, PUD, overlay zoning district for certain land located at Lombardi Avenue and Marley Lane, Titletown District Development Phase Two. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for this development? Is there anybody here who would like to speak for this development? Anybody here who'd like to speak for this development? Hearing none, is there anybody here who would like to speak against this development? Anybody like to speak against this development? Anybody like to speak against this development?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close that public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Nine B, public hearing regarding ordinance numbers 05-3-19, creating a planned unit development, PUD, overlay zoning district for the Brown County Expo Center and Rest Center parcels VA-41-6, VA-41-7, and VA-42, not including the land south of Armed Forces Drive. Anybody here like to speak for this? Is there anybody here who'd like to speak for this? Anybody here who'd like to speak for this? Okay, hearing none, anybody here like to speak against this? Anybody here like to speak against this? Anybody here like to speak against this?
Move to close the public hearing?
We have a second by Trustee Paul, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, the hearing is closed. Ten, action items. Ten A, action regarding ordinance numbers 05-2-19, excuse me, O5-2-19, amending a planned unit development, PUD, overlay zoning district for certain land located at Lombardi Avenue and Marley Lane, Titletown District Development Phase Two. Anybody have questions about this PUD for Aaron?
Move to approve ordinance 05-2-19.
Second.
I'll just make a note as well, I've been, or I presented you tonight with an updated version of the ordinance with some red changes, basically it's just some preliminary language indicating the processing of the application and referencing the prior ordinance that it's amending, so just a little bit of additional information into the ordinance that's presented, so I'd ask that you adopt this as amended.
That's this.
So move.
Right here.
Yes. Okay, so is the second okay with that addition, that we are adopting the amended version?
There's no changes in this from what's been presented previously to us, right?
Right. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten B, action regarding ordinance number O5-3-19, creating a planned unit development, PUD, overlay zoning district for the Brown County Expo Center and Rest Center parcels VA-41-6, VA-41-7, and VA-42, not including the land south of Armed Forces Drive. Do we have any questions on this one for Aaron or...
Question, south of, what property is that?
That would be the Hudson Center property. Currently, the parcel VA-42 includes the arena and extends south across Armed Forces Drive, includes the Hudson Center. The CSM that was approved by the Plan Commission is actually the first step in bisecting that parcel, so the Hudson Center will have its own parcel in the future.
The Hudson will have its own parcel.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. I got lost here. I'll move to approve, help me out here.
Ordinance 0O5-3-19, is that what you're looking for?
There you go, I lost it on here. Move to approve.
Second. Okay, Mark, Mark got it.
Okay, so do we need to include, in the, Aaron, we would include the conditions of approval that staff has required?
That would be our recommendation, that was also Plan Commission recommendation, including the additional landscaping or addressing the north side of the building along Lombardi.
Okay, Gary, are you okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you're okay? Second?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number O5-3-19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten C, action regarding the preliminary plat of the townhouses of Brookwood Drive. Aaron.
The requested preliminary plat actually combines a number of parcels along Brookwood Drive into essentially three different areas for development of the townhouses for the Titletown Development. There's actually two steps to this process, one of which is the preliminary plat and the next agenda item is the final plat, because these are really just, it's more of a technical process for these two plats to combine them, we are fine with bringing it through at the same time, just as separate agenda items.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of the townhouses of Brookwood Drive, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, ten D, action regarding the final plat of the townhouses of Brookwood Drive.
As mentioned, this is the final plat, there are a few conditions of, that staff recommend, they're very minor technical revisions, as identified in the staff report, I've talked with the surveyor about this, I've sent him a copy of this, and those, these will all be addressed, but I would recommend approval with the staff conditions.
I just have a question, I know I heard some time ago that the owner of this development, they're going to prevent these townhouses from being used as weekend rentals for games, is that, is that too early to tell, we don't, we don't really know that, but have we gotten into that at all?
The discussion has been, they'd rather see these being used as 24/7 residences, but just as far as how to actually go through and legally prevent them from becoming short-term rentals, that's something they're still working through and trying to figure out how to make that happen.
Okay, well, I sure hope that, I sure hope we're not, I hope we're not closing our door-to-door here, up here, in the sense that we won't have anything to say about this if we approve these plats, I just think that, that would be a, that would be a disaster if that were allowed to happen.
You know, Ken, in any of my discussions with the Packers, they are not for the short-term rentals.
Not for and legally prevent are two different things though, Mary, you know, and I understand what you're saying, because that's, I've heard the same thing that you've heard, although not in the same way you heard it, I'm sure, but I just, I just hope we can stick with that and somehow, somehow get in the, in the deed restrictions when they sell these places to prevent that from happening, if it's legally possible.
These aren't being sold, are they? These are apartments?
No.
These are being sold.
Yes, these are townhomes. Well, you know, I, I view this really as no different if, let's just say from Brookwood to Morris, from Ridge to Argon, was all vacant land and a developer came in and they were going to put up family homes, I don't know that, you know, there's a lot of control there either to prevent, I mean, I, I was down in Madison last Wednesday and voiced my opinion to anybody who would listen about the whole thing about the short-term rental and, and what that law has done to our community and...
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Nope. Okay, I need a motion and a second.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'll make motion to approve the final plat for the townhouses on Brookwood Drive.
With, with the staff recommendation.
With staff recommendation.
Approved. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of the townhouses of Brookwood Drive, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten E, action on Class B Beer, Class C Wine License, Breakout Green Bay LLC, DBA Green Bay Escape.
Breakout Green Bay LLC, doing business as Green Bay Escape at 2180 South Ridge, they plan on increasing their business footprint by acquiring an adjoining suite, and as such, request a Class B Beer, Class C Wine License to go with the, the latest entertainment venture craze, if you will, that's going on, sweeping the country with axe throwing, before us this evening, if you have any questions for the gentlemen, Joe and Pat Van Abel are here, who are the owners, and entertain any questions that you might have.
You know, this was brought up by Plan Board, I think the only question we really had on that was, quote me guys, the backswing and the audience behind, behind of the axe falling out, that was the only question we had on that, and there was no, why don't you elaborate on a little more to bring us up to speed on that?
Could I have you come up and state your name and address, please, for the record?
Patrick Van Abel, address, W-2823, home address, Oak Ridge Drive, Appleton, Wisconsin. So yes, a community member that was on the Plan Board brought that suggestion up, and we did some homework and actually kind of liked the concept of having, although all the motion is forward, so you stand there, you kind of line it up, and you take one step over the line towards the target, we still said, well, what if somebody does decide, you know, it's a very short axe, so it's not like you're trying to throw some big, you know, a big handled axe, so, but we said, well, what if somebody is goofing off or whatever, we, Joe and I are partners at a place in Appleton called Badger Sports Park, and we have mini bowling alleys, and there's big screen TVs right in front of where the kids throw the ball, and we were very afraid of our TVs getting cracked, which they would have gotten cracked 100 times, so we put on very heavy Lexan, like very heavy, and they've been there for 10, 10 years, so we're going to build something very similar, it'll be a mix of chain link fence and then this very heavy Lexan, so that the other participants who are standing behind a bar rail, if you will, or a railing, so they'll be, they'll be really in a confined area, and just to explain to the board how this works, a person throws five times, they throw it, they go get it, and they're in a, in a caged tunnel, there are other throwers next to them, but they're all completely walled off lanes, you throw five times, you go and grab it, you come back, you throw it, and then when you're done, you set it into a box, you cross the line, nobody can leave from behind the viewing area, which I was just describing, so just to give you an idea what axe throwing is all about.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea, because I threw a bowling ball one time behind me, it was, wasn't supposed to go that way.
You seen a bowling ball go flying back?
I did that.
Well, at the committee, I was the one who asked that, that our staff look into this for insurance purposes, to cover us particularly, and secondly, to check with other facilities who have, who have experience in this, in this activity, and I see by the green sheet that someone, I don't know if it was Tony or Allison, someone checked insurance, and, and we are, we are covered for this?
Yes.
And who checked other facilities, anybody?
The chief had, chief had discussions with proprietors in the Milwaukee area, I believe, the chief had discussions with proprietors in the Milwaukee area, I believe, there was no issues, chief can speak for himself.
Okay, thank you, I, I, I just, I tell you, I worry, I worry, and I worry again, this whole board has been supportive of new businesses in this community, I think this, I don't remember one business that had been turned down, frankly, assuming the zoning laws are complied with, but this one bothers me, it just plain bothers me that somebody's going to get hurt, and I know you've checked, chief has checked, and you fellows have done your homework, but I'll tell you, I just, I'm nervous as I have ever been about saying yes to a Class B Beer, Class C Wine License, to a facility, safe as you claim it's going to be, to, to throw axes, I just, I just have a problem with that. And nothing to do with you two, nothing at all, you're, you seem like two good gentlemen, you're two good businessmen, it's not personal at all, I just, I just worry about it.
Quick question, how long has this been, how long has this new sport been going on? The, well, I don't know, answer that question first.
We can go back as far as probably three years.
All right, in the three-year history of it, have you heard of any incidents where there's been a problem?
We have not.
We got to ask questions, it's new to us.
Absolutely. No, we have not, you know, and just in reference to that, I certainly understand the, the nervousness that you feel, when we put our, our go-kart tracks in, in Appleton and then down in Madison, we had very similar, people say, well, you're going to have 16-year-olds, about 18 of them at one time, driving a go-kart, and although we have remote controls for them, we've been doing that for 26 years, and it's been incredibly safe, and we take it very seriously, and as we said last time, if we're not safe, we don't stay open, so that, that's really what, what drives us, I mean, if we're not safe, we can't stay open, we won't be insured.
Yeah.
Definitely, our insurance company has something to say about this, as far as protection and whatever, you know...
Is what, I'm sorry?
Does your insurance company give you guidelines on what is recommended to insure a, you know, a throwing alley like this? Do they give you guidelines, or how do you, who educates who on this?
It's funny, in the entertainment industry, it's not, it's not going to be as detailed as you'll see in a retail setting, or, you know, fire and safety and that type of stuff through a lot of other industries, you know, you go to the, the go-kart, go-karting industry, or laser tag, or batting cages, which we have all of, you know, the standards aren't as numerous, because there's not that many operators around the country, that being said, we do have guidelines that the insurance company requires that we follow, so there's, you throw the five times, you set it into a box, there's a line that's crossed, there's a, there's a, there's a table that they're behind, so absolutely, there's guidelines that we have to follow from them, and they underwrite us accordingly.
Okay, okay. You guys got to remember too, that, I mean, there's other, other businesses in the community that are firing bows, that are a lot more dangerous than an axe is, more accurate, all that stuff, guns, indoor ranges and everything too, that they have to follow the same criteria, or probably more stringent, but I mean, it's, I don't know, I, I don't see as much of a concern as some of these other ones, to be very honest with you.
If I may, one last thing, so, with the spirit of what we're going to take on is, people are going to book online, and they're going to arrive at the store, just like our escape room games, and for people that don't know what that is, we lock six to eight perfectly sane people in a room for an hour, and they have one hour to get out, last time, there were people that didn't know, so, as there, you're going to arrive 15 minutes early, you're going to get a briefing on how this is all going to go down by your lane attendant, and then that attendant's going to be watching while this happens, during that 90-minute experience, they can buy two beverages, and that's it, after the experience is over, just like the escape rooms, we're going to send them on their way to Andouzies, or the bar, or home, or a movie, or whatever they might want to be doing, so this is not, like, I've been hanging out at the, the axe throwing place all day long, drinking two, and they're gone, so that, that is really the spirit of what we want, because we don't want to entertain it, it sounded, sounded as crazy to us a few months ago when we looked at the business idea, as it might to you guys tonight, but we'll put our safety record against anybody, anywhere.
So you're not in the bar business there?
No, we're not, this is entertainment destination, visit, pay go, thank you, we take a photo, and then they're going to go out the door.
Okay, all right.
That's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, that's great, I'm glad you're doing that kind of limitation, the thing I worry about, somebody comes in half-loaded already.
Yeah.
You give them two drinks, and now they're nine-tenths loaded, it's not your fault, I'm not pleased, I, I don't know either of you gentlemen, and you seem to be good people, I'm just, just concerned about it, I remember the episode Johnny Carson Show, remember when that big guy, when that guy threw the axe, you guys ever see that one?
Nope.
Haven't you ever seen that? Oh my God, you're too young, you're too young.
Ken, you're the only one that remembers Johnny Carson.
Oh man, that was, that was quite funny, but anyway, okay, all right, let's take it.
All right, let's move on, I'll move to approve the Class B license for the Breakout Green Bay LLC, doing business as Green Bay Escape.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B Beer, Class C Wine License, correct?
Yes.
For Breakout Green Bay LLC, DBA Green Bay Escape. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good luck, I hope you have good luck.
Thank you.
For, for us too. I'm worried about it.
You can, you can be the first one. We'll have you.
Good luck, really, good luck.
Hey, Mary gets to throw out the first ball, you can throw the first.
First axe, okay, there you go.
Hey, Mary has to catch the first ball.
Oh, wait, Mark is at the other end.
Yeah.
Okay, ten F, discussion and possible action to amend premise description, Green Bay Moose Lodge, number 801.
No, this is a good one.
Patrick?
The Moose Lodge is seeking approval to amend their Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License premise description to include an outdoor social area immediately in front of the, their building, it encompasses 55 feet in width, 25 feet deep, and the boundaries will be delineated by decorative planters and signage reflecting no carryout of alcohol beyond that point, before us this evening, if you have any questions, is the manager, Nick Schmider, and if you have any questions for him, Nick would be happy to entertain any questions.
The only thing I can add to this, the Moose Club, if you remember, I came to us, I don't know, let's say two years ago, something like that, and we approved what they had drawn up, and at that time, we had fencing around it, and there was just a lot of rules and regulations that the village had, that we kind of went for more of a decorative look than the bar boy or fence around it, so with, what Nick here is proposing, I think, is more pleasing to the eye, and what we'd like to see the outdoor seating being held at as far as the view from the road, you might say, so I think what they're doing will be very beneficial to the club.
Is that a motion to approve?
If there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the outdoor setting for the Moose Lodge 801 and Morris 701.
I'll second that, and then Mark has a question, I guess.
This doesn't have to be fenced or anything, I guess, is my question?
No.
Village Board, we changed the ordinance last year, you could have fencing, but you could also have, like, as alluded to, decorative planters, things of that nature.
Mark, the one I always use is Pinterland and their beer garden with the...
What about all the other businesses that are...
Well, that was just, remember the fencing we used to have and all that, the gate could only swing one way, which I noticed at a property I was at the other night, people were using that as an, except they had a door into their fenced-in area, but they were using it as an exit too, which, I guess now, there's nothing wrong with it.
If you get open, it's going to open.
Normally, when you went in that beer garden outside, you had to leave through the inside of the building, but I see them leaving on the outside now.
Yeah, we changed, we changed that.
Yeah, we've changed it, so, it's legal.
The fencing, doesn't have to be a solid fence or a continuous fence.
We're asking that people submit some sort of plan, whether it's planters or other things they want to do, so if there's an existing business out there that has a fence and wants to get rid of it and wants to do something else, they're more than welcome to come in and submit a plan and show us how they're going to deal with the issues.
I think Red Robin, if I remember right, was the first one that came to the village years, whenever they came into an existence, but that's where you needed the gates, the fencing, and whatever else.
Right.
So through living and learning, we've eliminated some of that.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure we're treating them the same as everybody others that jumped through these hoops before.
Like Allison said, they got the right to change that now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the amend, amended premise description for the Green Bay Moose Lodge, number 801, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Is that so bad, Nick?
Thank you.
Ten G, action on Class B Beer, Class B License, renewal of Apple Hospitality Group LLC, DBA Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, and license transfer to TSFR Apple Venture LLC.
Apple Hospitality is the holder of the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License at present, they are in discussions with selling said property on the corner of Oneida and Hanson Road to TSFR Apple Venture, assuming the deal goes down properly, you'll see in the, in your packet, the license surrender, if you will, and transfer to TSFR, all paperwork is complete, we're just waiting on the final closing date of TSFR at this time.
Move to approve contingent upon the business transaction being satisfactorily completed.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve contingent on the business transaction being successful, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Ten H, action to extend the license premise, The Bar Homegrown Way Inc., DBA The Bar.
On July 27th of this year, The Bar is planning to have a special event entitled The Bar's Backyard Barbecue, as part of the event, they would like to extend their Class B license description for that particular day, right now, their license only reflects usage on Green Bay Packer game days and UW Badger college football games, this event on July 27th would be considered, or treated, if you will, like a Packer game day scenario, both public safety and zoning have been notified of this event, there are no issues at this time.
Is that only for this year?
This year, for that date, Joe Zarin of The Bar is here, if you have any questions for him, if you like.
Chief, you're, you're fine with this? Okay.
So every year... So every year, if they continue to have this, they'd have to...
Every year, you have to come back, okay.
Let's have a question. I see The Bar is, they're property anyways, partly in Ashwabnon and partly in the city of Green Bay. Is that a problem for, who's, is that a problem for you, sir?
Could you come up and state your name and address, please, for the record?
I mean, seriously, is that work, you have to go to two municipalities to get things approved? What's your name, sir?
Joe Zarin, 1809, South Sun Kids Circle of the Pier.
Thank you.
The issues that we've had in the past, being in two separate municipalities, is if we have issues with paramedics or that issue, explaining to the 911 operator if the event is in the parking lot or within the building, so.
Okay. The reason I ask, does it make any sense for us to seek making it all in Ashwabnon, is that even, I know it's possible, but a Green Bay would have to agree to it. I mean, have we ever approached them on that? Yeah, right, right.
Annings, annexes, the bar.
I use one annex, no, no, no.
I'm sure there's a long line of others that would join. I don't know that that would be feasible, we certainly can try and approach that. We have been approached by a few other property owners, asking if that was...
Okay, well, with this drawing, is that, the part that's crosshatched, is that the only part that's in the city of Green Bay of their property? Can you see this, sir?
No, but I can tell you, where our building is...
Yep.
Is Green Bay, and if you go out about roughly 40 to 60 feet out our front door to the west is Green Bay, but if you go out our front door and take a left and you step off from the sidewalk, which is concrete, to the parking lot, which is blacktop, is the line.
Okay, alright, thank you.
The solution is that they would build a really awesome building on the corner that would be fully within Ashwabnon and that would resolve their issues. Right, Joe?
Okay, yeah, right.
Really put me on the spot, huh?
Okay. We'll have staff get right on this.
Yeah, right.
We already talked about it before the meeting started. Gave them some tremendous ideas.
Alright, thanks.
And you should call Joe and tell him what tremendous ideas you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. I'll move to approve the request for the extended license premise.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the license premise for The Bar Home Greenway, DBA The Bar, for the, oh, July...
27th.
Thank you. The July 27th event. Correct? Ken, July 27th?
Sure, yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, whoop.
Question. When you, you have to apply for the tent in Ashwabnon, you have to go to Green Bay to do the same thing?
Yes, I've already, that's already been...
You ought to move that building on the corner then.
It would eliminate a lot of double things, yes.
There you go, it's a solution to the problem. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 10-I, action on Class A liquor license for Three Clans Airport, DBA Wingate by Windham, Green Bay.
The Wingate requests approval of Class A liquor license to offer the selling of wine in their sundry shop located within the hotel. The shop's dimensions are 16 by 6 by 8, which is securely locked storage unit. This request is not unlike a couple past ones from, such as Home Two Suites and Lodge Kohler.
This is standard procedure, Pat?
Same as we did last year for Home Two Suites.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark, you have discussion?
Do they have another liquor license in the facility at all, or any bar?
Class B beer.
For?
Beer. Class B beer.
The same purposes as what they're doing here?
Well, no, this is product that people can take to their room. They're selling whole wine.
And we only do that, Home Two Suites is just a beer.
No, they...
Wine?
Yep.
And this is liquor?
It's all under liquor, there's no wine designation for Class A. This is the, like, the shop at Home Two Suites, like, the shop.
I understand, and there's no limit on these licenses?
Class A 16. The board changed that last fall, I believe.
That Windham is owned by the tribe, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, Three Clans Airport LLC.
LLC, okay.
Wasn't a fan of changing the liquor license number to 16 in the first place. I voted against Home Two Suites, so I will be voting against this one too.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second on the Class A liquor license for Three Clans Airport, DBA Wingate by Windham, Green Bay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
One, no. Thank you. 10-J, request to approve Resolution R 5-3-19 regarding the Brown County Expo lease revenue bonds. Allison.
So as part of constructing the expo, we are going through a process identical to what we did with the Resh Center. So probably not many of you here for that process back then, but essentially, the way it happens is currently, the county owns the land that Shopko Hall and the arena, to the parts that remain anyway, sit on. They will transfer that property to the CDA, and the CDA will lease that land back to Brown County. And then, we will bond, it's actually in the name of the CDA ultimately, for, well, all total with cost of issuance and everything, is about $99 million. And then, the county is the actual obligor of that particular debt. Should there be any shortfall, the revenues themselves are paid out of room tax dollars. The, there is about $15 million of half percent sales tax from Brown County that it is collecting at the current time, and then there's another four and a half million that is excess Lambo field sales tax that is also contributing to the project. So those are the sources overall of the funds. In terms of how this process works, the CDA had to hold a public hearing formally for the lease itself. They did that previously, and they're reporting that they did that to you in this report, so it's a little more unusual in terms of the documents you're seeing, but these are not things I've made up. These are all things that people way smarter than me are saying, hey, these are the next steps. So what's before you now is essentially to give the blessing back to the CDA to go ahead and enter into this lease with Brown County, accept the transfer of the land, and then proceed with the bonding. Our next CDA meeting will be on June 6th. At that point, the bonds will have been sold and they'll approve the final sale of bonds, and then we would have actual cash in hand, if you will, from the bonds somewhere around June 20th. And we're kind of running out of cash, so that's why we need to keep the process moving. So that's kind of at a 30,000-foot level. If you have specific questions or anything, certainly let me know.
Are these the double exempt tax bonds, tax bonds I read about, the double exempt from tax, state and federal tax that I read about?
Yes, they are. And if you would like more information, I can put you in touch with somebody if you'd like to buy some.
That'd be Baird, or?
That would be Baird, correct.
Alright, well, I mean, local people, I know it was in the paper a month ago or so, a couple of weeks ago, whenever it was, I think local people, there's some might, there's some wealthy people in this community, they might be interested in purchasing some of those double tax exempt bonds. So, okay, thank you.
I had a couple people ask me about them, and they were going to call Allison to see if she could get them, that they could buy some of those bonds, but I told them that probably call Baird.
Call Baird, yes, yes.
So.
And John Meehan, who you've met before, John Meehan, a lot more often you're seeing Brad Vekut of late, but John Meehan is really the lead from Baird on our end on it, but we have a myriad of other lawyers who are all consulting on it. It's a very large project, statewide, this is a very large project, and it's great to get it finally off and started.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R 5-3-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 5-3-19 for the Brown County Expo lease revenue bonds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10-K, review and approval of ordinance number O 5-1-19, an ordinance amending Sections 18-2-33 parent F, 18-2-33 parent F, parent 1, and repealing and recreating Table 18-2-33 of Chapter 18, Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection and Disposal of the Village of Ashwabnon Municipal Code relating to preparation for collection. Oh, it's a multiple.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve...
Just, I have a question. I talked to our finance director the other day, just about the whole issue of recycling, and the fact that, because China won't take our paper from this country anymore, that I think we are getting to the point where we're paying, we, the taxpayers, in this municipality, along with others, other municipalities are paying now, a significant amount of money to get rid of our recyclables. And I just wonder if there's, if it would be worth our time to investigate whether someone on a local, and I guess statewide, local, I would include statewide, basis who would take paper from the village if we collect it that way properly, assuming that happens. Is there any possibility for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ken, at the Solid Waste Board meeting this past week, that very discussion came up because with recyclables, recyclables as a whole, it is approaching the same amount, if you will, to pay to get rid of recyclables as it would be to pay to get rid of your normal garbage.
Really?
It isn't there yet.
Wow.
Now, about six, seven years ago, we were getting money back for our recyclables.
Right.
That's dried up, and we've been paying the past about a year and a half for our recyclables. It hasn't approached the amount we pay for rubbish yet. The one saving grace is exactly what you just mentioned, is the paper. The paper that is sorted through all the communities, or recycled by all the communities, is bought by, is actually fought after by a lot of the mills around here. And the price that Brown County gets for that helps offset a number of the other ones that are sitting very stagnant.
So Brown County's already doing that, then?
Yes. Yeah, that's the big one. That's probably the reason why we aren't paying even more at this point, is the paper's actually helping keep that number down.
Okay. Are there, and I don't want to drag this out, but are there not companies that are using, for example, plastic anymore or aluminum to make other products? Is that part of the problem? Do you know? Maybe you don't know.
There's just so much out there. The amount that, the amount that China is no longer purchasing is so vast that the stateside industries aren't able to use it up.
Alright, thanks, Doug.
You know, when I was the chair for the Public Works Committee, I was always so shocked at what we pay. You know, we're really only the residents, we have 17,000 residents, we collect very few business garbage. To get rid of garbage, people don't realize, it usually runs between like $13,000 and $16,000 a month, just for, that's a lot, I thought. I mean, I look at like Green Bay, they have 102,000, 104,000 people, and I'm sure that they're paying dearly.
Yeah, okay.
It is amazing. Okay. So we have a motion, Ken, and a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Mark Williams, seconded by trustee Allison.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10-L, review and approval of Resolution R 5-2-19, approving the Village of Ashwabnon Review of the 2018 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C Mar, pursuant to WDNR 208-compliance maintenance resolution. Doug?
Folks, you see this one each year, this is the DNR statement that we have to provide that we are reviewing our sewer utility, both on a financial and operational basis. There are some communities that their sewer utility is a district, or it's outside of the governing body, and this is DNR's way of making sure that the governing body is overseeing the finances and operations of their sewer utility. With our sewer utility being part of the village, it's reviewed each year during budget time, and our operations are part of the standard operations here at the village, so it's pretty easy to...
Move to approve Resolution R 5-2-19.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R 5-2-19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10-M, Village of Ashwabnon Cross Connection Inspection Informational Update.
And on the trifecta of interesting things for me to share with you tonight, this one is in regards, if you remember, it's going on about, gosh, nine years, 10 years, our cross connection inspection program. DNR mandated for the village to follow it, all communities to follow throughout the state. We've been doing a number of the residential and light commercial inspections with village staff. We're still going to be continuing to do that with our recent inspection by the DNR. They want us to get more inspections done on the commercial and industrial end, and one of the items that we've been approached by, by some businesses and other communities are doing it, is sending out letters and giving them the option when they have a plumber in to do that inspection and send us the results, which would help not only the business get the work, that inspection done, it could be done on their time and not when the village says, where there would have to be a special call brought in for somebody to do the inspection. So just wanted to give you an update as to where we're starting to go with that, so that we understand that these items aren't always exciting and that there's lots of inspections that go on, but that we're going to send these notices out well in advance of anything being required to be done, so that it can be worked into standard practice, if you will. A number of these larger facilities have plumbers come in for various projects throughout the year. We don't want it to be a separate visit and a separate charge. If it can be worked into some of the work that are being done there, we want to take advantage of that.
So we would send out a letter to the businesses, Doug, so they, to make them aware of it, that, okay?
Just like we do with our residential inspections, we send a letter in advance, excuse me, in advance, so that they could schedule that work. This would be followed in the same way.
Okay. Any questions?
No action, it's all part of our ordinance. I just wanted to bring it up so that you're aware of it.
Doug, how long's this been going on, you said, since '09?
Cross connection inspections have been, I think, in the rulebooks for a long time. The DNR started enforcing it in 2009, and that's when the village started.
I think you guys have been in my shop and inspected that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, there weren't any issues. They just said if there were, they were going to follow the Johnny Carson axe-throwing procedures if they found anything wrong at your place.
They didn't say nothing about that. Evidently, I must have passed then.
Okay, any other comments? No, okay. 10-N, action on request for facility therapy dog. Chief?
Good evening. Before you tonight, I have a request from Ashwabnon Public Safety for a facilities dog to be used in our school district. Officer Everts, who's been the school resource officer for a couple of years now, we first got up in the schools, found out real quick that we have a lot of kids with behavioral issues, and you'll find out that the behavioral issues just doesn't impact the one student. He ends up taking staff's time, school resource officer's time, and sometimes you have to clear the classroom because of the disruptiveness of the students. Looking at this issue, school resource officer Everts reached out to his colleagues throughout the state, looking at ways of handling situations like this, and one of the things that he's discovered is a facilities dog, therapy dog, and he's found a resource out of Ohio that trains these dogs. There's about a year-long training, and then there's a year-long application process to be accepted in to receive one of these dogs. And through his studies, the Nasha Police Department... And through his studies, the Nasha Police Department has a facilities dog, which they've had over there for a couple of years, and we know, he went over there and job shadowed the school resource officer and the interactions that they had with the dog and the students and whatnot, and found drastically how the, you know, having that therapy dog or facilities dog within the schools has a calming effect before someone does burst out into some kind of emotional breakdown or meltdown. So what we have before you tonight is, it's kind of a, it's a year-long process, and step one is seeking the board's approval. We got the approval through the personal finance, or excuse me, for public works protection. And after, if we get approval here at the village board, and my next step is to go before the school board, because we're looking at this as being a fifty-fifty venture between the school district and the village here. And like I said, if we get approval this summer, we're now looking at taking ownership of this dog until probably a year from now. And with that, Officer Everts, who would be assigned to the dog, there's a two-week training course that takes place in Ohio that brings the dog and him together. The dog has forty different commands, and he'll be good on there for the in-service for two weeks, and then after that, there's a one-day in-service each year outside of Chicago he'd have to attend. If the event that Officer Everts retires or takes on a different position within the department, the dog can be retrained to be with a different handler on like a canine unit service dog, where that, there's kind of a one-on-one relationship. This year, the therapy dog is a little more adjustable and friendly to people, and it can be retrained if the event that the handler is changed. And the facilities dog is with the handler, which would be Officer Everts the whole time, inside and outside of work that way, so.
What happens if the, if we approve it and the school district doesn't? What are your thoughts, then?
I think then we're, I think, like most of our marriages, if we don't have both parties involved in it, then I think it becomes a moot issue.
I do know that, you know, my daughter is a special education teacher out in Plover, and she's familiar with this type of situation. I talked with some people who are in the West Pier School District, and they do have a dog at one of the schools at West Pier, two of them or whatever.
And that one's assigned to a teacher?
Yeah.
I think she's a special ed teacher and has that in the classroom, where this one here would be utilized throughout the school district, depending if it gets called to a child out of control.
I know that at Public Works, there was a question on the stipend. But I asked, I did talk to Allison about that, and she said that that is, would have to be a, you know, if it changed at all, it would have to be a union negotiated item. So the stipend would be what the stipend is. So.
And the stipend is comparable with other, be it a service dog or canine unit, given, which is, the stipend's a hundred and fifty dollars per pay period, which breaks down to ten dollars and seventy cents a day.
Yeah.
I frequented a place in college, but it wasn't, that had a dog, but it wasn't a school.
I'm a huge proponent of this. I really like the idea. I have a roommate who is in the Green Bay School District and thinks it's a phenomenal idea for what she does in fourth grade. My dog, myself, is actually a step below a therapy dog, a canine good citizen, so I know the value that it can bring. If there's no other discussion, I would move to approve, to the action on the request for the facility therapy dog, to take it to the next step.
I'll second.
Just have a question before, not a question, just a statement before we vote. I'll support this, but I lament, I'm gonna sound like an old curmudgeon, that's what I am. In my day, I had therapy, that's when I got home at night, if there was any therapy to be had. And you know who gave me the therapy? I just lament the fact that, now we got dogs taking care of kids in school. That's just, I don't understand that. I know, I know, I like to be a social liberal. Don't know if I like that term, but, man, when are we gonna get away from pills and therapy dogs and get families again to the point where they, where they take care of their kids and discipline their kids the way they should be and get some of this stuff resolved at home? I know it's not happening, and therefore, we need something like the therapy dog. And again, I'll support it, I just lament the fact that we've gotten to this point in our society. I just think that's a, that's a real shame.
You know, Ken, I was holding back from just what you were saying, because students that are emotionally and behavioral issues, where in the heck is the parents? That's their problem. Why do the social, or why does the schools become babysitters? Why does the safety department have to become babysitters to these people? It's the parents' responsibility to make sure their children behave. And you know, we're, we're just, we're losing it. We're losing.
Well, I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Well, you'd be what you want, but.
For a tiny bit, just because we know the parents aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, and we can argue that all day long, so then why should the other twenty-something kids in the class suffer that loss because now they're dealing with that one child's disruptive behavior? You know, there's twenty other kids, there's teachers involved, there's special ed teachers and counselors that get pulled out of helping individual students because they now have to help with the disruptive student. I hear it every single day, every single day.
That's what I was gonna say, my daughter, too.
And why should the other twenty kids suffer?
The thing about it, Gary, is that the families that we grew up with and you grew up with back in the day, it's totally different dynamics these days. It's not, there's.
You're so right, Mark.
There's one, you know, one parent families, and that's what, you know, that's the way it is. I mean, it's, they're not being able to support their own families because they have to work all the time and give the kid the level of support they need at home, and that's part of the problem.
Well, the taxpayers better realize that they are paying for this, because that's where it's, you know, it's a shame to say that, but it's becoming a burden on the people of the community.
You're right.
We gotta have therapy dogs, we gotta, you know, I remember driving by the schools, seeing a police car there, it's like, God, you gotta be kidding me. Break some money, we got people in there that, that's what they do now, is these officers watching the children.
Well, like Allison said, though, you know, we have, we have a classroom of twenty-three kids, and twenty-two of them have to leave the classroom because one child is having a meltdown, and if this dog helps that one child, that helps those other twenty-two kids also. And am I saying it's right or wrong? That's not for me to judge. All I can say is that if this helps that school and those children make it and keep going, I will be an advocate for it, so.
But what's the next step, Mary? What's the next step? Mark, I agree with you. We change, society is changing, has changed for the last fifty, sixty, seventy years. But what's the next step, Mary? Schools cannot do what ought to be done at home, and I agree with you. Our homes are changing, no question about it. But we cannot look to our schools to do what needs to be done at home. That's the bottom line. And you know, you know what you do with that one student? It's called suspension. That's how you take the one student away from the other twenty-two. And Lord forbid, we can't do that anymore because somebody's gonna get sued.
Well, that's the problem. The kids know more than the people watching them.
And there are, there are children who need psychological help, no question, no question about that. That just goes without saying. But there's a lot of other things, a lot of other students who just don't get it at home. It's not their fault, not the student's fault. We understand that, too. But where does this, where does this stop?
I don't know where this stops. All I can say is that if this dog helps some of those children make it through a day, I will be an advocate for it, because they need, those kids need something. And obviously, and I'm not blaming anybody for them not getting it home, all I know is that if this dog can help those people before there's a huge, those students before there's a huge meltdown.
Well, I'll agree to it for the simple reason that the children that are there to learn gives them the benefit to learn and let the dog take care of the one that is not behaving.
I'll just add my two cents in saying this is a lot more difficult topic, this five-minute discussion.
Yes.
My wife has been involved in special ed on everything from the classroom to creating state and federal legislation. A five-minute discussion won't solve the problem.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, we realize.
We're fixing a system.
And this is, this is a tool for the school resource officer and for the school district. You know, it's something, you know, just like teaching curriculums are constantly changing and whatnot, you know, and the kids, you know, Ken, you know, to come down on the kids with some of their emotional state, and all we do is go, we go through the doors, the most structure they have is the school.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Right, I agree. I couldn't agree anymore.
Our teachers and our school resource officers worry the most during the summertime because they have no structure. We have meal plan, meal program set up, you know, because of low income and whatnot. You know, and at Christmas time, public safety helps out in finding kids because they don't have lunches.
Exactly, that's like what we've been talking about. You're absolutely right, chief.
Officer Everts has.
So the portion for the discipline, that's one part of the dog's action. Another important part would be, it's very helpful and useful in aiding when we're interviewing a child that's possibly a victim of sexual assault or a victim that's a victim of some kind of abuse. When I spoke to the officer from Nasha I rode along with, he said that he's able to get a forty-five minute statement from a six-year-old kid, which is, that's unheard of. I mean, I can't even get that from a high schooler. So it's a great tool for that, and also another, it's another great tool to break down those barriers between law enforcement and those students, because they just see us as an authoritative figure. So I have a soft uniform, this is what this is called, that word, it's in the schools, but I'm still seen as a police officer. And just for that simple fact, those kids won't approach me, and it's hard to build those relationships, so we don't have to get to those disciplinary situations. So when I spoke to a couple officers in the Wasaw School District, he said it's just like night and day. He said he has kids coming up to him all day long, just start petting the dog, talking to the dog before you know it, he's talking to them, find out things that are going on at home, you know, some things he can help him with, and things like that. So, you know, there's different aspects for the dog. The disciplinary one, that's one aspect of it, but there's a lot more that goes with that therapy dog.
That's why it'll be supportive, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Can I call a question?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend approve, or to approve the facility therapy dog for our half. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thanks.
When are you going to school board? Or have you already? Okay, all right, thanks.
Please let us know how that results.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ten O, action on 2019 dash 2020 Retail Alcohol License Renewals.
Before you, as renewal applications, as received thus far, everyone's in but one entity, and if they don't get back to me in another couple of days, they're gonna be looking without a license come July, because I'm done chasing, but I digress. Before you, that list, nothing much and changes. Taste of India, it's the same ownership, they're just changing their LLC name. One positive is Huhat is giving up their Class B beer, Class B liquor, and going with a Class B beer, Class C wine. So that's a positive from a village standpoint. Other things of note are just some new names as far as agents go, and Moose Lodge premise expansion. Everything's in order. I would just ask for approval contingent upon all fees and outstanding indebtedness to the Village of Ashwabon, and it's paid in full before they're provided their license.
Move to approve of the contingencies listed.
Second.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with making sure that all dollars are paid to the village. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten P, committee appointments. For the Police and Fire Commission, we had an opening because one of the members was not a resident of Ashwabon. So we have Chris Madsen, that I would like to appoint to Police and Fire Commission. His term would expire in 2024. And also, Ken Golomsky is stepping down from Stadium District Board, and I am going to appoint Keith Lucius. He's the finance director for the school district, so you should have gotten the application handed to you. So those are the two committee appointments I would like to recommend.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those committee appointments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten Q, action on Resolution R five dash one dash nineteen, the Ashwabon Blast Celebration.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten R, annual distribution of public officials and employee code of ethics.
This item is actually in our ordinances that must be provided to all public officials and employees. Good bedside reading for you, and it's informational purposes.
Do I have to read it if I have no ethics?
Yes.
Scratch that, scratch that.
Okay, number eleven. Any items for next agenda? Please call the village.
One question for maybe Allison, maybe? On these big agenda items that have pages and pages of stuff, is there any way that that can be condensed into a file? Because it takes me, you're almost done with the next agenda item by the time you get to the next item that you have on the agenda.
This packet was two hundred and forty-two pages.
I mean, it just, there's no way to put it in a PDF or anything like that?
Not separately. I think you could hyperlink from, you'd have to go back to the top. We can maybe look at paring down, like I actually had a lease that's this thick that I didn't put in your packet, that if you had questions, I was just going to talk to you about it rather than putting it in there for that reason. Part of it is trying to, we need to put the stuff in there so we have a record of it, and it's the most manageable searchable way for us to get to it, but let me see if we can find some shortcuts and maybe talk with Jeremy. He knows this, and Terry, they know the system better than I.
When we had the other tablets, I know that you all have the iPads now, but when we had the other tablets, mine had a little thing on the side that I could push over and I could go from A to B to C, and then it would just skip all the white pages.
These do the same thing, Mary.
I could do that at home on my computer at home. I could do that, it's got that on the side.
You don't have to look at all that stuff. If you go down to outline on the left side of your iPad here, because I've just discovered it tonight, I can punch in on any one I want.
Yeah.
And don't have to look at all that.
Yeah.
It's taken me a little while.
Gary will host a tutorial after class today.
How many, same question, how many of these do we print? Two hundred and forty pages, how many do we actually print? I hope not many.
They're not this big normally.
I'm sorry?
Four, three, five.
Oh, okay, all right, a very small number.
Single digits, yes, correct.
Okay, all right. I mean, even with three of them, that's two, four, six, seven hundred, almost eight hundred pages. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of printing. Okay.
Just brought it up.
That's a good point.
We'll try and find some shortcuts for you.
Okay. Closed session items, Patrick.
During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabon may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five one C for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of public safety employee personnel matters over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five one F for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering public safety employee personnel matters and financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where imperas B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And C, Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five one G for the purpose of conferring with the legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to public safety and keen slash echelon holdings litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved. And lastly, D, Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of possible discussion and action of deliberating or negotiating the purpose, excuse me, the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the development of parcel VA dash one three two dash one dash six, where competitive or bargaining. dash six, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five sub two to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Move to go to closed session. Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Aye.
Trustee Malchesky.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.